For which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no executive session tonight. Moving on to presentations, we have our HIB self-assessment report. Mrs. Bolden, hello.
Hello.
Happy birthday again. It's part of the public record now.
Let's be honest, it's on Facebook.
Great for a meeting.
I think the PTA put it on Facebook.
I am sure.
I think that's where I saw it, yeah.
We might have to talk to my assistant. So this is the HIB self-assessment report that we're required to do according to the HIB law every year. And I think we went up one point last year, but we did not move this year. So out of 26 total areas to score using a scale from zero to three, zero means we do not meet, three means we exceed, we have mostly threes, we have eight areas where we're meeting the requirements for a total of 16 points, and we have 18 areas where we're exceeding the requirements for a total of 54 points, which gives us a grand total of 70 points out of 78, so that's a 90% if you're doing the average there. We're happy with that because we do do a ton of other things in education, so we're not solely just focused on everything HIB. And we don't have a huge problem here with it being K to five and having our SEL program in place and our character programs in place and all of the teachers now trained with trauma-informed care and all those great restorative practices. So we have definitely seen a decrease in the number of reports we even receive. But just some examples of where we exceed, we have a safety team, we always meet every year, we have our agendas on our sign-in sheets to identify the patterns if we do have any HIB reports, like what is happening, what are the comments being made, what's the grade level, does there seem to be a certain, you know, grade level that's struggling with some student conflict? And, you know, of course, I have Vivian who's very helpful and she'll intervene or do some social stories or go in and do some work with the students. Our investigations are always completed within the 10 days, our parents are notified on time, we provide the staff required training every year through Public Works, and we implement our SEL programs and work on school culture throughout the year. Areas of where we just meet, but we're not like soaring above and beyond, or just the establishment of our HIB programs and SEL, we did have curriculum committees, you know, people sit down on the committees, but we didn't include, sorry, we didn't include groups such as law enforcement or like outside public that just, we didn't when we adopted our SEL curriculum. So we'll always get that two versus the three. We also have HIB programs as required, but they haven't been part of our staff evaluation. So we haven't gone in and formally evaluated any of our staff members with an SELs, and it's usually math or reading or writing and the things we're focusing on. And we conduct our required HIB trainings, but we don't go above and beyond, and they say to exceed, you got to invite the outside, you know, people in from mental health agencies, and we just haven't. It's not saying we never will, we just haven't. So there are the areas where we're kind of just meeting and doing exactly what we're supposed to do as required by law, and some of the other areas, we exceed and do very well. So we averaged that 90% on that self-assessment report, and that's posted on our website after I confirm it in the portal. It gets, you know, finalized, and then they ask us to post it on our website, and that grade is always posted on our website for the public to see. Any questions? Okay, thank you for birthday wishes.
Thanks, Stan.
All right, moving on to item four, Committee of the Whole, do we have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Motion and second, we are now in Committee of the Whole. Just a quick general update on my part, thank you everyone for discussing our board goals, our first goal of the three that we're going to talk about next month. We'll meet for an executive session at 6:00 PM to talk about goal number two, which is dedicate specific time for team-building exercises and/or collaborative problem-solving sessions to strengthen board effectiveness and supporting the academic success of all students at OPS. So that'll be next month's topic. Any other items or questions for Committee of the Whole? All right. Hearing none, motion to close Committee of the Whole. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is this a hall in favor?
Hi.
All right. Number five, we have future dates and miscellaneous information, that's on your agendas if you guys want to take a look at those upcoming dates. And moving on to item six, routine board business, which is the approval of minutes. Do we have a motion? Second. And all in favor?
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to our first public comment section of the evening. All participants reminded, please stand, state your name and address, keep your comments to five minutes or less. The purpose of this public comment section is to discuss items on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made in the second public comment section. Publics reminded that all attempts to resolve any concerns, complaints should go through the appropriate staff members and administrators. Any public comment? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to those who are watching us online. Section eight includes the enrollment, school safety, suspension, and anti-bullying. All of those reports will be presented during the October 2025 board meeting. On September 2nd, we welcomed back students, excuse me, we welcomed back all of our staff. We talked about our goals, our objectives, we celebrated our wins, and some of the pieces just wanted to bring to note based on the collective effort of the staff in Oakland was we've seen continued growth in maintenance of proficiency levels in literacy, but especially of note what we want to continue celebrating was last year we made it a point to prioritize mathematics, and as a result, we updated our targeted intervention, we updated our student support, we updated our teacher collaborative time, we identified key performance indicators, and as a direct result of the efforts, not only of our administration, but also of our teachers, our students, and their families, we saw an eight percentage point increase in mathematic proficiency in a single year. Normal growth is 2% to 3%. And so hats off to the faculty and staff in Oakland for working incredibly hard, for making the adjustments, and for our students directly seeing the benefit. Currently, the school is working on their 25-26 school acceleration plan. That will be presented to district administration in early October, and we will be sharing remnants of that during the district test report in October publicly at the board meeting, and then more specifically what academic supports are being put in place in order for us to continue that progress. We would like to publicly welcome Dr. Dana Walker. She is our new Special Assistant in Charge of School Improvement, Performance, and Accountability. Dr. Walker comes to us with significant leadership experience as well as classroom and district-level instructional leadership experience, which she will be leveraging in order to help us support her role, which is comprehensive school improvement and accountability, data analysis and performance management, the development of educator tools with training, educator evaluation, state testing and reporting, operational workflow automation and efficiency, in addition to supporting our database administrator, human resources, and then comprehensive multi-tier system of support. And so we'd just like to publicly thank Dr. Walker for joining the team, and board members will have sufficient opportunity in the coming days to interface directly with Dr. Walker. And that concludes my report.
All right, moving on to item nine, Business Administrator Board Secretary Report.
Item 9.01 are your August monthly budget transfers. 9.02 is your August Board Secretary Treasurer's Report Financial Statements, as well as your cash flow analysis. Item 9.03 is a listing of the purchase orders issued during the month of August and now for the month of September. 9.04 is a listing of the warrants that were paid in August, and then a listing of the September warrants that will be paid tomorrow morning pending approval this evening. And that is it. Do you want me to do a section 10, or you want to do it?
All right, moving on to section 10, Finance Billings and Grounds Committee Report. And I'll give us a rundown of that. Item 10.01 is approval of budget transfers, 10.02 and 10.03 is approval of certifications of over expenditures, 10.04 is approval of Secretary Treasurer reports, 10.05 and 10.06 is approval of purchase orders and warrants, 10.07 is motion to approve the Collingswood Oakland Purchasing Manual for the 25-26 school year, 10.08 is a motion to approve the 25-26 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, 10.9, motion to approve Gloucester County Special Services School District Press Program to provide teacher of the depth services, 10.10 is a motion to approve the request of the Oakland Civic Association to use the front lawn for the town picnic, which will be on October 12th, from 12 to 3:00. And items 10.11 and 10.12 are use facilities forms for OMA SAC. Do we have a motion to approve items 10.01 to 10.12? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Just a couple of comments on my end. One of the things that came up during committee was the petting zoo, and we were looking at insurance information for that, anything come through?
I did receive it, it should be attached to the agenda.
Okay.
And while on use of facilities, Adam, if you're listening at home, entries. OMA SAC, I did put two of the items on, but the winter, spring, and summer over 30 basketball, I'm going to need a new insurance certificate because it expires. So it'll expire before the winter season, so we're going to ask for another insurance certificate and hopefully put that on in November. So, okay. Adam, if you're listening.
But that's not, but that's not relevant for the gymnites, it's okay for the gymnites?
It's okay for the gymnites, but yeah, for the OMA SAC, yeah, they run out, that one runs out. Yeah, the men's over 30 basketball league, their insurance certificate expires, so.
And also just some questions that came from committee discussion in regards to some of the expenditures this month. Did it have a check written to Stouts Metal? No relation? Yeah, Stouts.
Do you realize we paid $14,000 for four railings up there?
I'm grossly aware.
Well, I wish I knew that, I would have put them up there for $13,000.
We had Stouts Metal.
Glandily aware.
The railings are officially installed, did have some tuition adjustments as a result of a DCPMP placement for a student in Modlin, also expenses for charter school placement. And then we have our direct, some questions on the district energy and PSENG as providers, which Direct is the supplier of the energy and PSENG is the middleman, they're the deliverer, so. And then we do have a retirement, oh, that's not finance though, all right. So that's it for finance in committee. Any other comments or questions for finance? All right, honor roll call.
Mrs. Vappel? Mrs. Love? Mrs. Marmian? Yes. Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stouts?
Yes.
Not Stouts. Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
All right, motion approves. Moving on to item 11, Curriculum and Personnel Committee, Mr. Schaefer.
All right, good evening, everyone, just a couple items for approval tonight. Item 11.01, we're seeking approval to accept the retirement of Tara Bowersfield, phys ed teacher, effective November 30th or sooner should a replacement teacher be hired. And item 11.02, we're seeking to approve the following after-school stipend, which allows for kind of after-school supervision for students that may not be able to get home right away. And if you look at the attachment there, this item, or this stipend had been budgeted for. So we're seeking approval on items 11.01 and 11.02.
Do we have a motion? So moved. Second? Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Just a comment. Tara's letter of retirement is not dated.
Okay. And the date of the letter itself, or the date, or the date of retirement?
Yeah, it was emailed, and then we asked for a different letter because the letter said resignation and not retirement, so I think we were approving it tonight as a retirement, but she's supposed to be sending us a revised letter.
Okay, the one that says retirement is dated?
If it's an email, it will be.
Oh, we don't have it yet.
She was asked to change it.
Yeah, I understand, I mean, we can channel to the gym or something, but it's nice to just legally have that to. That's why there's so many lawyers in the world.
Just a couple of quick comments on my end from committee discussion. We're excited, our new literacy program pilots are up and running, teachers receive training as the school year begun on these two new reading programs, and are testing them out, see which one's the best fit for our students. I'm excited about the alignment to Science of Reading, so it's going to be good. Also, Ms. Bolden was excited about our new lunch routines that we have going on in the cafeteria, seems to be going very, very well. Cafeteria's off to a great start this year. And then one big announcement, not necessarily specifically for curriculum and personnel, but OPS will be celebrating our centennial in 2026, so stay tuned for some big events and celebrations and all kinds of stuff. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's vote honor roll call.
Mrs. Vappel?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian? Yes. Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stouts?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 12, School Community Relations and Policy Committee, Ms. Marmian.
Good evening. Item 12.01 is the report from the Collingswood Board of Education. Mr. McMillan?
Hello. So the board met on August 25th, and I'm going to read through my chicken scratch, but a lot of stuff, a lot of positive things happened, which is great, starting off with not the greatest positive things, but we have three retirees, Windsor Yatomo retired, Karen Principato, and the legendary Jack McMullen of 29 years. Then they released out the Taxpayers Guide to Spending, which I believe is on the website to be seen. We went over the board goals from our retreat that we had on the 4th, and then the CEA contract presentation. So the contracts were approved and passed, so new teachers' contracts covers the years of 2024 and 2027, includes certified staff, admin assistants, and some instructional assistants. It was one of the largest raise averages at 3.89% annual. Admin assistants get an extra 5% annual reimbursements of, I don't, I don't know what that word was, it was reimbursement of something, but they, there is back pay for the 24-25 year that was supposed to be paid off by the end of August for all the teachers. Let's see. Back-to-school night is now a required duty for all teachers, middle school promotion and high school graduation is also a required duty for all teachers. Retirees can receive the retro pay for if they retired before the contract went through. Back-to-school nights for the middle school is scheduled for September 25th, and the high school for September 24th. And I think for me at least, having two kids that are in the middle school, both the high school and the middle school are now phone-free, they're using the yonder pouches to lock up their phones. That, yeah, but the middle school, the high school is using yonder pouches, but the middle school, apparently, they're not allowing, yeah, they're keeping them in the lockers. And I think that's, that's great, it's going to be an interesting hump to get over, but yeah, that's about, that's about it for, for our meeting.
Thank you. Item 12.02 is the PTA liaison report, Mrs. Rotondo.
Hey, everybody. So for PTA, just about upcoming events, the Ice Cream Social is this Friday at 6:00 behind the Snacks and behind our school here. The Stox Pancake Sale is back, order forms will be coming home pretty soon, and the delivery of the pancakes will be Friday, October 17th. There is a family fun night coming up in October with a Monster Mash theme, that'd be Friday, October 24th, with activities for varieties of ages, teacher grants, teachers may apply for a $100 grant that could be used toward anything used in the classroom or being paid by a PTA member or attending one event. Pre-K and kindergarten family fun nights are back, they were popular last year and I think years prior, so they're back, they'll have separate age-appropriate activities with earlier time and earlier end time. The PTA will collaborate with pre-K and kindergarten teachers to come up with activities and themes. There will be sensory-friendly family fun events for the classes to ensure inclusivity for all of our friends, we'll be collaborating with their teachers as well. Centennial celebration is coming up, as Richie just mentioned Centennial, right? They're excited to get to work on activities to mark this big year for us in our history, they have a few things lined up, but I'm not at liberty to discuss those, they are discreet people and they want to keep it a surprise. And the next PTA meeting is Tuesday, October 7th at 6:30 here in this library.
Thank you, and just for the record, I don't know if you said it, but their first meeting in the year was September 9th, so, thank you. Item 12.03 is the OMA SAC report, Mr. Tabey.
Thank you. From Mr. Scher and OMA SAC, we have our, our family nights up for approval, our gym nights, so we'll have monthly gym nights again this year. Also, let's see, there'll be co-sponsoring events for the Week of Respect and Red Ribbon Week as well, and our, we'll continue to partner with the PTA for healthy family fun night events and assemblies. That's it, from OMA SAC.
Thank you. Item 12.04 is the Oakland Education Foundation Report, Mr. Schaefer.
There has not been a meeting of the OEF since our last meeting, so there's no update. If anyone from OEF is listening, please don't forget about me, I have three meetings left, so, but nothing new to report, so, thank you.
Thank you. Item 12.05, our policy's up for a first reading, there are four. 0143 is board member election and appointment revised, 1636.01 is notification of promotion, new job and transfer opportunities, this is a new policy. Policy 6111 is special education Medicaid initiative program revised, and 6220 is the budget preparation revised policy. Item 12.06, our policy's up for a second rating, there are five. 0173, duties of public school accountant revised, 0174, legal services revised, 0177, professional services revised, 1570, internal controls revised, and 1620, administrative employment contracts revised. Item 12.07 is a regulation up for first and only reading, one reading, 1570R, internal controls revised, so this is the regulation that goes with the policy, that's up for a second reading, right? Yes. So tonight we are seeking approval on items 12.05 through 12.07.
All right, do we have a motion for 12.05 to 12.07?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on our items here?
I just have a couple of comments from the committee meeting. Number one, we definitely were talking about the centennial, very excited about it and partnering with the school and the PTA and, you know, members of the public, so looking forward to that. There was a question on the regulation that we are looking at and the use of district and districts. The previous regulation did have the plural, and we are one district in Oakland, so that has been revised. We also, as part of our board goals, I know we'll go into more detail about this, but we did notice that the Collingswood Board of Education has scheduled four town halls, with the first one being, I believe, September 25th. I think it's around that, it's the same night as a back-to-school night. But regardless, it's something that we'd like to emulate here, so the committee will be talking about that, and we do welcome board member feedback. And then finally, we revisited an idea that had come up before, especially since the passing of Chuck Lehman, who was a very active member of the Borough of Oakland Town Council and was always a presence at our meetings, is how we can, you know, forge better communication with town council, and no one has volunteered from our board to want to be a representative, you know, in the audience at town council meetings, so I am happy to take that on, unless anyone, of course, would like to rotate with me. We did talk about with Aiden, who's not here tonight, maybe switching off and depending on it, there is a, they're usually in late of our committee meetings, but given their start times, it should be possible. So I'm looking forward to reporting back to the full board, you know, and maybe seeing ways that we can better communicate with our partners on town council. So that, that's it for me, I'll stop talking.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, question about the roundtable, would that be, so I think, I don't know if it was in our finance committee, or we were talking about maybe bringing out representation to some of the events that we have in Oakland, right, like having a little booth, is that what we're talking about on a roundtable, or are we talking about a more formal kind of situation, or could we blend both of them together?
Thank you for bringing that back up, because it was an idea that I think came out of our retreat, we just haven't gotten to the action plan for that goal yet, and maybe, is that goal number two, or no, it's not, it's, maybe we should, given events in the fall, we might have bumped that up.
Yeah, we can flip flop next month if you want and do number three.
Well, the town picnic is October 12th, so I do actually, thank you for bringing that up, I think it would be great to have a Board of Education presence there, I'd welcome feedback on that. But about the town halls, this would be a more formal. But about the town halls, this would be a more formal, you know, more in line with what Collingswood has done. That seemed to be a really great template that we could follow.
The one, one thing that came up too in regards to the town events is a possible idea would be to, because the BEA, or not the BEA, the OEA has a table, so to have a board member, you know, kind of piggyback off that if we could articulate with the OEA and participate with them as well. So, yeah, I could always reach out to the OEA too if you want to get the ball rolling, especially with the town picking, picnic coming up so quickly.
All right. A roll call vote.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Mr. McMillan?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stouts?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Moving on to item 13, Ms. Lays, we have our HIV reports, none reported this month. Moving on to item 14, this is our second public comment section on any general items that folks want to bring before the board. Do we have any public comments? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to item 15, motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.